The September 4th, 2024 regular planning board meetings called to order at 6:33. This is to advise that the notice of the time date, location, to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place. Reserve for such or similar announcements on August 27, 2024, transmitted to the Times, the Princeton Packet and West Windsor Plainbourn News on August 27, 2024, and filed with the township clerk on August 27, 2024. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schickell? Mr. Panko? Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Bobby? Ms. Applegate? Councilman Whitfield?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Here.
Chairman Clark?
Here. We have a quorum. Thank you. I will, I don't think there's anything else, public comments for us. So I'll turn it over to the public to speak for three minutes each. Non-agenda, non-pending items. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. Okay, next item on the agenda, minutes from August 21st, 2024. For those, any amendments, changes, other than typos? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st, 2024 to have a move by the mayor, second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Well in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, one abstention and so Annis is abstain also.
Oh, August. Yeah. No, no, no.
Okay, one abstention for and one abstention for Annis and the rest are all ayes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the second draft presentation, the Barien City Planning and Zoning Study. David, you're up.
That is me. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, if at some point you can't, just wave, yell, and I'll stick my mouth close to my phone. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you again. My name is David Novak. I'm a planner with Virtus Associates. We've been working with township for about at least seven years or so at this point. And tonight we will be continuing our discussion about Barien City. So thank you again for coming out. Just as a little bit of a rewind, you might remember back in April, it was April 17th of this year, I presented some preliminary findings regarding the Barien City neighborhood and specifically how the zoning doesn't quite match up there. And based on that analysis, based on a lot of the comments we received, we've come up with another presentation with some preliminary recommendations. And I really want to stress that preliminary recommendation, we actually even put it on the cover page. So this is ideas, these are thoughts, these are suggestions based on what we've seen with the analysis and what we've seen based on comments. Nothing is written in stone yet. This is still a ongoing process. So I don't want you to think that everything is set in stone. Planning is often a balance of competing different opinions and ideas and it's our job as planners, as board members and as the public to navigate how we go about balancing that. But there was at least one type of overriding philosophy that went into these recommendations. And that was a quote that we received back in April, which is big on charm, small on space. I wish I could pay credit for it, but I can't. It was a resident. That philosophy held to guide a lot of the recommendations that we put into this presentation. So with that being said, it's just a quick itinerary of what I'm going to discuss. I just want to provide a brief background on what a master plan is and what this process is. So that way we're all on the same page about what step we're on. Then I'll do a very, very brief initial analysis recap. That was essentially recapping our presentation back in April. And then I'll discuss some preliminary zoning and design recommendations based on analysis and then based on those comments that we received back in April. So very briefly, what is a master plan? A master plan is a comprehensive, long-term strategic document, which is intended to guide the growth and development of a community. I often call it a roadmap. It's a roadmap of where a community is and where it wishes to be in the future. In the world of planning, we have typically three types of roles. Not always the same for every municipality, but for West Windsor, it adds up here. We have on the bottom left of the screen, the planning board. That's this group here. That's the group that's responsible for coming up and developing and adopting that master plan. Next, we have on the top, mayor and council. That's the group that actually adopts development regulations. And those development regulations ideally should be based on that blueprint, that roadmap identified and developed in the master plan. And then on the bottom right, you have the zoning board, which is a board that amongst other duties has the responsibility of granting variances or denying variances. Those are deviations from the development regulations that mayor and council come up, which are based on the guidelines from the planning board. So the planning board is the entity that's responsible for adopting a master plan. So if there was a master plan hearing tonight, we were adopting a study that would be an appendix to our land use plan about Barien City. Say if we adopted that tonight, how would your life change tomorrow? It wouldn't. That's just the guideline document. So nothing would change until the mayor and council would have to adopt or prepare a development regulation that would then get referred back to the planning board and then back to the council for adoption. So when a master plan is adopted by a planning board, and nothing's being adopted tonight, but when a master plan is adopted by a planning board, regulatory, nothing changes. So back in April, we did an analysis of the entire Barien City neighborhood. I will just briefly refresh everybody's memories on what that was and what that entailed. This presentation is online, so I won't go into all the details. But for the most part, Barien City is located in the R-1A district. That district is really designed for lot sizes of one and two-thirds acre. Well, none of the residential lots within Barien City meet that minimum lot size criteria. You can also see that the majority of properties, residential properties in Barien City also don't conform with the lot frontage requirements, lot width requirements, lot depth requirements, front yard, rear yard, side yard, FAR floor area ratio, which we'll discuss in a little bit as well, and improvement coverage standards. So right now you have a zoning district that encapsulates Barien City that does not reflect the development pattern of Barien City.
David?
Yes. How did we get there?
In terms of the history of zoning in West Windsor Township, how could a building be created? These lots have not changed size.
No.
How did we get to this point where these lots are all non-conforming? How did it, in the history of planning and zoning in West Windsor Township?
Short answer, I had no clue. I don't know what with the history of that zoning district. I don't know why.
David wasn't born yet.
No. I just didn't balance my mind. There could be a
Such a disconnect.
Plan where all the properties are non-conforming.
It's such a disconnect and it's something that's been though it's been something that's brought up in your master planning documents even for us. There's been this disconnect. I don't know the genesis of it, but that's what we have right now. It's this disconnect between what the zoning regulations expect versus what's realistically what's actually there. We also have some non-residential uses in Barien City. We analyzed those as well. And for the most part, again, a lot of non-conformities with the existing zoning there. In addition to just looking at the R-1A, we also analyze what I call the sub neighborhoods. Because when you walk up and down the street to Barien City, you do get different flavors of different types of development pattern. So we split up Barien City into these different sub neighborhoods. And we did an analysis with the average lot sizes, lot frontages, lot widths, depths, front yards, rear yards, side yards, floor area ratio is an improvement coverage to where. And again, I won't go into all this. This is on the website. I believe the prior presentation saying might be on the website still. If there's other questions about this, I can always answer them. But essentially, we broke down this analysis based on these sub neighborhoods just to get a better feel of what those disconnects are on a street-by-street basis. So based on that and based on the comments we received back in April, we came up with a number of recommendations regarding zoning. So this is what our existing zoning map looks like, right? You can see those thick white lines are the boundaries of our zoning districts. We can see there's a yellow line there. If I don't have my glasses, I would not be able to see that. But we have a yellow line that roughly identifies the boundary that we studied for Barien City. And you can see the majority of it is located in the R-1A. And you can see what those existing sand and tile, and that lot area requirement of one and two-thirds acres or 72,600 square feet just does not line up with any of the lots there. So our preliminary recommendation is this, to break down Barien City into these subzones, which are more reflective of those streets. And what we did is that we looked at each of those sub neighborhoods or their subzones. And we analyzed what are the smallest lots, what are the average lot sizes, what are the largest lots, what's the distribution of lot sizes? And we based our recommendations on that existing development pattern as well as some of the feedback we heard. One of the recommendations or one of the concerns that we heard back in April are oversized lots. You know, lots that get combined together, which would allow for development of a property that's really not consistent with the remaining development pattern in the area. So one of the ideas that we discussed at that meeting was potentially developing a maximum lot size. So what we established for each of these subzones would be a minimum and a maximum lot size. Those lot sizes are designed to encapsulate a significant range of properties there. Now, it's going to be impossible to get every property into conformance. It's just not how zoning can possibly work unfortunately. But what this does is that these lot sizes, both minimum and maximum, are designed to better reflect the existing development pattern of those streets and how big those lots presently are. One of the things that we dealt with in developing a maximum lot size is, well, how do we actually enforce that? How do we catch that? This gets into a little bit more nuts and bolts, but if you're a property owner and you buy two lots together, you can theoretically combine those lots together without having to go for approval from the township for, you know, for a subdivision. It's just done through deed. One of the recommendations that we're thinking about is that a building permit cannot issue for any oversized lot created after the effective date of the order. So if you have a lot that's oversized and you want a building permit, you would actually need a variance for that. What do these recommendations do? Well, here we see an analysis of the existing lot sizes and their conformance with the R-1A district. And as you can see, none of the lots in these sub neighborhoods, these subzones are conforming to the current lot size standards of the R-1A district. With this scale that we're posing, you can see we get a lot more conformity. Alexander, the mixed-use area would still be mostly non-conforming. Scott Avenue North would be mostly not conforming. But you see, we're bringing things from 100% non-conformity in that case down to 53.3%. In the other ones, we're getting a lot more conforming. We're getting a lot more representative of the existing development pattern there. Very similar to lot width. Again, we took it sub neighborhood by sub neighborhood. And we tried to encapsulate that range of smallest, average lot and larger lot widths. Didn't include it in here. We also analyzed quartiles as well. And again, proposing minimum lot widths and maximum lot widths. And what those ranges do is that you can see it takes this level of non-conformity, which at its best is 6.7%, but for our more residential neighborhoods, as the best we have right now is 93.1%. And it knocks the conformance down or knock it levels and knock conformity down significantly. So we can see that by adjusting the lot width requirements, establishing a minimum and maximum lot width, we can get these properties in Barien City to a greater degree of conformity. We also looked at front yards. So front yards ranged significantly. You can see on, you know, Lily Street, Montgomery Street, smallest front yard that we estimated was about four feet and the largest was 48.9 feet. There's significant range. So what we are proposing is to adjust the minimum front yard setback to better reflect that. But we want to allow some acknowledgement of the existing development pattern there. So again, we can see this existing levels of conformity or non-conformity are pillars compared to what's proposed. One of the other ideas that I'm suggesting that we consider is front yard averaging, right? So establishing front yard language that says that a building constructed on an existing planted lot in single ownership need not be set back any further than the average of the existing setback on each of the abutting lots. Now, what does that mean? Essentially, if you have a front yard setback requirement of, say, 30 feet for Lily Street, and you have a vacant lot there or a lot where the house was removed and on one side you have a house that's maybe 10 feet away from the front yard lot line and the other one that's 20 feet, what this provision would allow you to do is average those two out to get an average setback of 15 feet. Now, why would we do that? One of the goals that we try to get with a front yard setback is a uniform streetscape. Something that's aesthetically pleasing when you're driving down the road and you see the houses lined up as opposed to having one house set significantly back further from the rest of the houses. So this would allow for some flexibility in developing a more uniform street frontage. We also looked at side yard analyses and again, very similar process, looked at those smaller side yards, the average, the largest, and came up with ideas for how we can adjust the side yard setbacks to better reflect the development pattern there. And we can see the levels of non-conformity, which anywhere from around 38% to upwards of 93.3% or for Alexander, that mixed-use area, 100% doesn't reduce it that much. But we're getting closer, getting a little bit better, getting a little bit more reflective of, or closer to existing development patterns there. We didn't want to reduce the side yard setback too much because one of the concerns that we heard was in that April meeting, we didn't necessarily want houses being built immediately adjacent to other houses. Next, we have recommendations regarding floor area ratio. Now, what is floor area ratio? Floor area ratio or FAR is a mechanism that municipalities employ to manage the scale and bulk and intensity of a building. The way you regulate FAR is that you take the total floor area of a dwelling or a building minus certain areas, garage space, mechanical space. If there's a storage space where the roof is less than seven feet height, you don't need to count that or the ceiling height rather. You take that floor area and you divide it by the lot area. And that gives you an idea of what you're allowed to build there. We analyzed, and this one I go into a little more detail, we analyzed the ratios of floor area ratios among each of those sub neighborhoods, those subzones. And we identified what would be the smallest, what would be the largest. We even broke this one into quartiles and then medians and averages because I wanted to see the total scale of numbers about how we can potentially look at floor area differently. Now, these are just numbers. They're ratios. That doesn't really mean a lot. So we also looked at just floor areas in general, right? And we can see on each of those sub neighborhoods, what those floor areas look like when we break it out to the smallest, the first quartile, median, average, third quartile, quartile and largest. And then I wanted to break it down even more. I wanted to see throughout Barien City, what do floor areas, what do house sizes look like based on lot size? And this was very interesting to me because sometimes it can deviate wildly. Usually you would expect in a smaller lot, you're going to have a smaller house, or a larger lot, you're going to have a larger house. Well, the smallest, one of the smallest houses was 666 square feet. That was on a lot greater than 27,500 square feet. Meanwhile, we also had a dwelling that was about 1,100 square feet on a lot size that was just less than 5,000 square feet. So it does, it does differentiate and it does vary a little bit. But again, we wanted to see what these house sizes look like based on lot sizes. And based on that, we looked at a different way to look at FAR because again, one of the main pieces of feedback we've heard in that April meeting was people worried about lots being combined together and houses overpowering their neighbors. So what we were considering was developing a sliding scale for FAR. So utilizing a sliding scale to encourage dwellings which are more compatible to the little lots and the existing development pattern. And the formula that we came up with was 1,000 square feet plus 5% of the lot area. Well, what does that mean? We have a table there in the right that would show you a before and after. So for example, on a lot size of 5,000 square feet, right now, the existing R-1A district would allow you a house of only 650 square feet, about the size of an apartment. This would allow for a house size of about 1,250 square feet. But as you go up in lot size, that return on your house size doesn't increase as exponentially. So if you look at a lot size of, say, 30,000 square feet, right now you would be allowed a floor area of 3,900 square feet. With this sliding scale, you would get a house size, a maximum house size of 2,500 square feet that would be allowed. So again, what we want to do is that we want to allow for some flexibility for property owners that want to improve their dwelling, modernize their dwelling, but also at the same time, not necessarily come up with house sizes that are going to be overpowering and overwhelm the local area. And this sliding scale is one idea that we have to address that. One of, sorry, wrong. I got two computers. One of the other ideas we can do is also think about whether or not it makes sense to establish a maximum dwelling size. We did a very similar type of analysis of improvement coverage. Improvement coverage is essentially anything in the ground that you're changing. It's your house, it's your patio, it's your driveway, your garage, everything. We looked at improvement coverages based on all these sub neighborhoods, these subzones. We analyzed percentages. We analyzed square feet. We analyzed it by lot size as well. And again, if I'm going through this quickly, this will be on the website. So you don't need to furiously write down these numbers. And based on that, we also came up with a similar recommendation of thinking about a sliding scale, which again is going to allow for increased flexibility for smaller lot sizes and on larger lot sizes not allow for as much overpowering development. One of the other concerns that was brought up during the meeting in April was building heights and whether it made sense to look at decreasing building heights because again, we're getting houses that might be a little bit too tall, too large for the surrounding area. Right now, the way we measure building height is the vertical distance between the average level of grade along all exterior foundation walls of a building, which grade shall remain substantially unchanged, which means you can't build up your property and then build a house on top to get a higher house. And you look at the highest parapet or cornice level in the case of a flat roof or the mean level between the eaves and the highest ridge point in the case of a pitch roof. And again, right now we would allow for 35 feet. So if you have a pitched roof, if you think about the E, which is the bottom and the peak, that midpoint between the two is allowed to be 35 feet above the ground. If we're looking for smaller house sizes or shorter houses in the area, one of the recommendations we would have is to consider a house size of 28 feet. One of the other things that was discussed was accessory dwelling units. Now, what is an accessory dwelling unit? It is a smaller independent residential dwelling located on the same lot on a, as a standalone or a single-family dwelling. It's often called a brandy flat, an accessory apartment. The phrase I always hear is mother-daughter, could be located within the existing dwelling. It could be located in the garage. It's essentially a smaller accessory living space that is somehow related to the principal dwelling. Right now, we're not recommending anything on this. The reason being is there was legislation in the state that's been introduced and right now there's not a lot of movement on it. There's been multiple bills introduced. I think the latest was back in May. So we're still waiting to see what happens with that. Now, the state can either move instantaneously or they can move like a glacier, one or the other. Right now, we'd like to just keep an eye on this though, because what we don't want to do is create an ordinance that would allow for accessory dwelling units or consider accessory dwelling units and have the state come out with something supersede what we did and we have to rewrite everything. So we're kind of in a wait-and-see pattern to see what the state does with this.
David, could you expand that thought and then give an idea of what the state of New Jersey wants to impose upon municipalities with ADUs?
So it would be essentially making accessory dwelling units permitted in every residential zone for every single-family dwelling. So it would supersede local zoning, which is not an unusual thing. A couple of years ago, the state came out with a EVSE, which stands for electric vehicle service equipment/make-ready ordinance that superseded local ordinances and allows or requires for essentially electric vehicle parking in certain applications. They'll often do these things where you supersede local zoning. This would be one of them. So if the state was to adopt the legislation, it would make these uses automatically permitted in your neighborhood and as well as every other residential zone in West Windsor. Depending on which draft of the legislation you look at, you see different regulations. It seems to be for the most part, you'd be allowed to establish an accessory dwelling unit in an existing garage or an existing dwelling without any type of variance. It would supersede state parking requirements. So say if you have a garage that's used for parking and you decide to convert that to an accessory dwelling unit. Typically, the state requires you to have a certain number of parking spaces on your site. The draft legislation would supersede that. It would prohibit municipalities from linking accessory dwelling units to the principal dwelling through familial relationship. So sometimes when people want an accessory dwelling unit, they just want it for a family. You know, mom is getting old or the kids are coming back from college. And oftentimes, if somebody gets an approval for that, it might be conditioned on that relationship. That would not be allowed in most of the accessory dwelling unit legislation I've seen. So again, we're still waiting to see what happens and again, the state can move either very quickly or they can move very slowly.
Hey David, does it make sense to have, I know that the state will supersede us, but does it make sense to have some kind of ordinance that we would like prior to the state coming out with what they want?
Not necessarily because the state legislation would dictate your ordinance. So what I would assume would happen would be much like the EVSC make-ready ordinance. The state adopts the legislation and then the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, comes out with a model ordinance that you, the municipality, basically have to adopt. And there's some parts of that ordinance you can change and then some parts that are really set in stone. So there's really not much you can do to get a jump on it because we don't know if the DCA is going to come out with that type of model ordinance again. I suspect they're going to, but it's more of a wait and see.
Okay.
Yeah. Excuse me, I apologize for the ragging. Killing me.
Has the legislation got clearly in any committees?
Was it?
Has the legislation got clearly in the committee?
I think it's been mostly in subcommittee so far. And I don't think it's gotten too much movement, but the affordable housing legislation also is moving slowly and slowly. So that's, that's why it's picture poison. Sometimes the state moves very quickly, like when they adopted the affordable housing legislation. Other times like the state plan, they're now running five months late. So. One of the other things that was discussed at the meeting are residential design standards. So when an addition or a new dwelling is installed in a Barien City, are there ways to make it more in line with the surrounding development pattern? There are a couple of ideas on how to do that, right? So if the community wanted to adopt these design standards to implement in their zoning ordinance, these would be certain goals that we would want to accomplish, right? So one of the goals would be having those additions at the rear of the building to minimize their visibility from the street. Oftentimes in front of the zoning board, when we see a floor area ratio variance in Barien City, those that add to the front of the dwelling really change the impact and design of it. When they add it to the back or to the side and back, it helps preserve that frontage and oftentimes you're able to make that addition kind of blend into the house better. We would want to encourage additions to utilize similar finished materials as the original structure. Have windows use double hang sash or hang them in pairs. Have the size and the mass of the building relation and be in relationship to open space. Making sure that windows, door openings, porches and balconies be, this will be compatible with that existing structure. And for buildings that are being renovated or rehabbed. And for buildings that are being renovated or rehabbed, or for additions utilizing windows, doors and architectural treatments that are compatible with the existing original architectural style of the building. Similar with facade improvements, encouraging facade improvements that are compatible with the original architectural style of the building. Uh, having some sort of visual compatibility in relationship to the building and the place in which it's in. Uh, side and rear building elevations having and receiving architectural treatments comparable to the front and side. So oftentimes we'll see a beautiful design for a front of the house. Looks great. Then they show you what the design for the side and the rear looks like and it's just siding and nothing else. Um, we want to make sure that any type of those nicer architectural treatments that you put on the front facade get carried over to the side and the rear. And that's related to blank walls as well. Uh, and then also looking at the relationship of materials and texture and color of the facade on the roof, making sure it's compatible with the materials in the building itself as well. There's also certain design standards that you can incorporate for roofs, making sure that they're compatible with the building. Uh, prohibiting flat roofs except on lower tier roofs. Um, having roof forms echo those of the original structure. Uh, looking at how you can limit dormers and secondary roofs. Sometimes when a house is designed and it's too tall and they're looking for ways to break up the inside, they'll throw a roof above a roof. Doesn't really make that much sense architecturally. Uh, looking at the placement of dormers as well. So these recommendations have been largely geared towards residential properties here, because the majority of your community is residential, but we do have some non-residential and vacant land here. And I wanted to focus on really the non-residential properties, being the Art Center, Brothers Pizza and the former shoe repair place, which is a mixed-use building in the corner there. And whether or not we want to establish those pre-existing non-conforming uses. So those uses that were once legally there now are no longer permitted by zoning, allowing those to continue. Um, you know, is there interest in increasing the allowable floor area ratio for nonprofit organizations like the West Windsor Art Center to allow for the full utilization of the Princeton Junction Firehouse? Right now, their FAR is built out. So if they want to expand to the non-utilized portion of that building, they would need approval from the zoning board. Uh, reviewing signage regulations, including providing murals and artistic opportunities for that building. And then one of the other major issues with the West Windsor Art Center is that parking is limited. Um, one of the ways to balance that is look at existing impervious coverage in the area. If you look at a map, there's a lot of parking in the area. And sometimes that parking is not utilized during certain hours. One of the recommendations would be to commit for the satisfaction of parking requirements on another lot within one thousand feet of that site, subject to certain lease agreements. So allowing for flexibility in parking standards where if we have existing parking areas that are underutilized during off-hours, why not utilize those for other uses? So these are again, the preliminary recommendations that obviously next we'll hear from you. Questions, comments and everything, but these are what we're looking at as the next steps in this process. So ultimately, what I'm going to do, or hopefully what we're going to do, is prepare an appendix to the two thousand twenty land use plan element, the master plan. We did something very similar with Dutch Neck. This will be another appendix to that, just focusing on Marion City. Should that be adopted, the next step would be to draft an ordinance to implement the recommendations in that plan. That ordinance would then be introduced by the township council. It would be referred back to the planning board after the first reading. And then it would be brought back to the township council for adoption, should they choose to adopt it. And then after that, it would be effective twenty days after a signature. Well, right now, we're not even up to that first step, which is the preparation of the plan. They're still talking about these initial recommendations. After that, after we get some feedback from you, then we'll begin preparing that appendix. Again, wrong computer. And that is the list of preliminary recommendations. So it's a trail, I'll leave it up to you. Uh, questions from the board, from public, whatever works best for you guys.
I'd like to hear from the public unless the board, board has some relevant, actually does the board have any relevant questions for David before we hear from the public? Yeah, sure.
Better? Yeah, one of the homes has been recently renovated, uh, reconstructed, I should say. Just want to ask you about um, your impression of that structure and what it looks like and how contextual it is with the Marion City that you see now and what you expect could be down the road.
I don't want to see that. Oh, sorry. Was that recent?
I I would think within the last year. Was it a fire?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I saw some plywood that looked like it was actually burned. That's why I assumed it was a fire. So maybe it was just the plywood they chose. Maybe that's
See the mold or staged firewood.
I think that while it was discussed at the April meeting, and I think a lot of that was uh, some concern about that house being a little over.
So as we have these conversations, so I would like to bring that up from time to time to see how that kind of fits into, you know, what's being proposed and what's the expectations of people that live there. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mary?
Yes.
Um, I've got a visual. Uh, Susan, can you help me out? Yeah. Sam, I got two, I think it's good this way. This goes this way and Sam is for you guys. So uh, as Susan distributes these, um, so I grew up in Bethesda, Maryland. Um, and uh, last October, I had the occasion to go back to Bethesda, Maryland on the uh, occasion of my fiftieth high school reunion. And being a planning and zoning guy, I just wanted to get a sense of what the community was like. What the community's like. So what I'm showing you on these sheets is a residential street in Bethesda, Maryland with three houses on it, a part of a longer street. And um, uh, caveat here, the comments I'm making are not about any of the bulk regulations that we've just gone over. The the comments I want to make is about the character of what you're looking at. Um, so what's happening in Bethesda is that a lot of the property is of more value than the house that's upon it. If you look at the three houses that I'm showing tonight, one is a McMansion, one is a modern thing. And then the one on the far right is a one-story brick rambler that's of the original neighborhood. So, um, my concern with Marion City and I really want to play off the the thought big on charm is I'm worried that the charm could be endangered by um, tear downs and rebuilds. Uh, I'm concerned that a rebuild in Marion City can follow every regulation that we want and make for bulk variances and setbacks and FAR and all that. Yet, uh, according to the uh, design regulations that have been been suggested tonight, they address roofs, they address uh, uh, materials, they address additions, yet they do not even touch the the category of a rebuild on a lot uh, that could be rebuilt. So I'm just putting this out tonight as a warning that what I've seen in Bethesda could happen in our community. Um, we've uh, driving around West Windsor, you've already seen uh, ha- uh, houses much, much larger than Marion City that are totally out of character with the surrounding area. So um, this is the major concern I bring to this review tonight and for Marion City, that uh, we keep big on charm. And my question to you, the residents of Marion City is uh, as we go through this process of planning and zoning study, is that is that a an issue of yours as residents of the community beyond the uh, bulk regulations? Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Curtis. Hey, 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 David, I have a question. Obviously, there's no homeowners association of Marion City development, but is there, is there is it allowed to to have aesthetics? Or it's, yeah, I know we can use the terms, you know, fit in with the neighborhood and um,
Contextual.
Contextual, yeah, architectural and
Are they strong enough?
But
That, yeah.
They're not, they're very, they're kind of general terms and not very specific as far as if there's a homeowner association, okay, it's gotta be no more than, you know, X number of feet and it's gotta look like you know, certain kind of siding or brick or is there anything we can do if the residents kind of like weigh in on that? Is there anything we can do to like um, you know, put his condition type of structure?
Yeah, it's actually funny that you mentioned that, because I was working on some affordable housing monitoring stuff today and reaching, reading through homeowners association documents, which are it's it's exciting as it sounds. Um, but you are, yeah, essentially that you you brought up one of the challenges for these design standards, right? Okay, we can say it should be compatible, but how do you actually regulate that? And outside of a design review committee from an HOA, the way to do that would be to come up with specific standards that would get incorporated into your zoning ordinance. What that means is much like a set, you know, front yard setback or a height regulation, those standards would be incorporated in your zoning ordinance and would be reviewed with zoning permits as well as with variance applications. So if somebody wants to, say, build a modern home, uh, and the township and community decides that we want to codify those design standards, yes, they could actually have to go in front of the zoning board for variance for that. Uh, we've looked at different ways to regulate this. And for single-family and residential neighborhoods, it's a little tough because it's either in your zoning ordinance or you can have maybe a good design booklet, but that doesn't have any enforceable weight behind it, right? You can talk about what you want in your master plan and if there's a variance, you can weight against that, but if somebody comes in with a conforming application and they want to build you know, a modern home there.
Yeah, so here's some of the things I'm thinking of. Very detailed, specific construction design. So in other words, like this modern house in Curtis example, one of, one of the details could be, has to have a peak roof with a certain degree of angle.
Yes.
You know, that would eliminate the flat roof modern design, just one thing. It it can't, it can't have, um, I'm thinking of the, that ridiculous house across from the church, St. David's Church. It can't have, it can't, it can't have any balconies.
I will have to look up.
It can't be of, it can't be of orange color. I, you know, I'm just sorry if I'm offending anybody. Um, oh, that's your house, Rob? I'm sorry. It's a very nice house, very large. Um, I don't know, I'm just coming, I'm just, this is off the top of my head, the things that very specific without a homeowner association, but specific design standards. You know, you know, maybe brick is allowed, maybe, maybe it's not. Maybe it's, you know, it's got to be repurposed wood and um, certain degree of angle um, on the peaked roofs. It can't, it can only have a maximum of two peaks. It can't have the twelve that are on that, that other house.
Yes. Yeah, that would, that's what you would have to do in zoning ordinance. You would have to get to a certain level of specificity that whoever's reviewing these applications will also be able to understand and dissect as well. And I think a lot of those recommendations you brought up about the pitch of the roof, building materials, that's all stuff that I, everybody understands. Uh, so I think that's going to be very important to incorporate. Should we choose to do so, incorporate those standards within zoning.
Right. And I see the difficulty in coming up with those standards that, you know, would be challenging. But, you know, if there's like twenty of those kind of design standards, maybe there's at least seven that prevents that yeah, yeah, that one-off design that nobody wants. That's what, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. So that's something that could be put into the ordinance that would prevent the teardown and then oversized structure with um, unlikable architectural design.
That is one of the tools that I mean, it's power to get
Okay. That's one of the tools. What are the other ones?
Uh, other tools would be some of those books that we already discussed. So for example, floor area ratio. That's a tool where you can control, not necessarily the look of a house, but the bulk of a house, height regulations. These are all different pieces of puzzle that you put together to determine what development can look like. And there's a lot of different ways to approach it. And there's a lot of different tools that I mean, it's probably can include like design zoning standards, like floor area ratio, like height, like setback. So there's a lot of ways we can shape how development looks. It's just finding that right mix there and you can accomplish that original goal that we had in our twenty twenty master plan, which was again to, to to maintain the character of the neighborhood, but allow for homeowners to come up with, you know, improvements to their dwellings to meet modern expectations. It's that, rocks of that balancing.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. No, just want to build up on something that Curtis said. I mean, the whole uh, uh, idea of this exercise was to find out what the community wants. I mean, whatever is the end product of this deliberation, whenever it happens, is going to affect all your home values, uh, one way or the other. And I don't want to be philosophically imposing on you what I feel are the views. Uh, you, there are a lot of people here, but Marion City is much bigger than whoever is here. So I'm trying to figure out how to judge exactly where most of the consensus wants. And if you have more people agree to a certain standard, it's a lot easier our job. I mean, we don't want to do something where it's fifty percent this side, fifty percent this side. We don't want to be uh, getting between neighbor and neighbor and trying to decide who's right, who's wrong. Um, I personally is trying to still understand whether you are more worried about look and feel or the sizes of the houses coming up. I mean, I've mentioned to Curtis a couple of times that if size is an issue, then um, zoning board has granted every variance that was in front of them for FER requirement, which makes the houses bigger. In fact, zoning board recommended that council adopts an ordinance to increase the FER in Marion City. Thankfully, the council refused and that ordinance is ready, but was never introduced. So I'm just trying to understand exactly what you are looking for, just the size, look and feel, like you said, only brick front or this, that and so on. That will help the gentleman make their job better when they come for the next round.
And let me just add, and I I just want you to understand the comments that I made regarding design standards and um, that was based on previous meeting and the residents' input and comments. It's not what I want. It's, as the mayor says, it's what you want. And that's what I was hearing at the previous meeting is design standards, look and feel of the, of the neighborhood, um, size restrictions, so on and so forth. So I don't want you to think I'm imposing um, standards for David to put into an ordinance. But um, just based on comments and feedback we received at the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, just one quick comment. I know you don't have homeowners association, but you do have a a group which meets regularly. So if you can figure out a way of just reaching as many of you as possible to gather the input, even those who are not there, again, that makes our job a lot simpler.
Okay, anybody, anybody else from the board? Okay. Um, at this time, I'll open it up to the public for comments. Please step up to microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Hello, I'm Isabel Kazdin and I'm at eleven Scott Avenue. And I think, forgive me for reading from some remarks, but I think what I'm about to say will address a lot of the questions, especially the last thing about the neighborhood association. So when we realized this was coming down the pike, uh, the Marion City Neighborhood Association actually had a meeting where we, which was noticed to everyone on the email list. Um, and so the process for the neighborhood has been to share this proposal with the residents and get their feedback before the meeting tonight. So we did have that meeting of the neighborhood. So we did have that meeting of the neighborhood association towards the end of August to discuss some of the basic information. And to inform people about how they can get a copy of the planning board proposal if they hadn't already. Um, the group decided to form a committee to review the details of the proposal and then evaluate them and make suggestions. And determine the questions that we, that we had, which we did um, form that subcommittee and that subcommittee consisted of myself. Um, Susan Abbey, Kevin Rinallo, Stacy Fox, and um, Aisha, I mispronounced her last name, Akingle. Um, so we had planned for that review subcommittee to meet for the um. Subcommittee to meet with the neighborhood again, but because of vacations and Labor Day, um, we haven't done that yet. So um, we're hoping to have another meeting after tonight to get more reactions to the proposal. Um, and we do have an email list that has been updated this year to make sure that everyone in the neighborhood gets notified. In order to be informed of the meetings and we have a Facebook page for the neighborhood as well, so. We encourage people to sign up for the email list and if there's anyone new here tonight that hasn't notified us yet that they want to be included. Um, we can take their names and add them tonight, um, so that we can make sure that we're including everyone's feedback. Um, but overall, when the subcommittee met, um, we are very supportive of many of the proposed zoning recommendations. So that the township sends to the residents' concerns at the last planning board meeting, which we were, of which we were very appreciative. Um, so we have some questions about the proposals as they pertain to the goals of the residents, as well as some responses to items that the proposal left open-ended. And finally, we have some suggested additions that we hope will further bring the zoning code and design standards in alignment with our goals for. Preserving the character of the neighborhood, um, and then we hope we can get more input from residents at our next neighborhood meeting. Um, so that is to say that this doesn't represent the views of the whole neighborhood, but it was four of us that met that were sort of appointed by. Other people that were not the whole neighborhood, um, but we hope that we can incorporate more views of the neighborhood moving forward. Um, so. I don't want to monopolize time, but we have a lot of notes that I can go through that came out of that meeting. Um. And I'll try to get there, through them quickly, um, and also state our questions, um. Which I would be happy to provide in terms of the questions, we can give that to you as well in writing. Um, so regarding the master plan, um. We would like to suggest adding the word historic as a descriptor for Barian City in the master plan. Um, and while we're not seeking at this time historic designation, um, and would not like to be subject to a historic preservation ordinance. Or zoning, but um, we felt that the neighborhoods. That reminding policymakers and potential residents of the neighborhood's inbuilt historic character is a way of managing expectations. For the required scale and design of the homes. Um, regarding the zoning recommendations in terms of the quali- qualitative standards. Um, the proposed minimum and maximum lot size, um, we really appreciated how the proposal increased the conformance of the existing lot sizes. And that they operate on a street by street basis, um, with the minimum and maximum lot width. We appreciated how the proposal conformed better with the existing lot widths and also appreciated that the minimums operated on a street by street basis. With the front yard minimums, uh, the proposed front yard minimums are an improvement over current zoning. And we appreciate how they conform better with the existing front yard sizes and that the minimums also operate on a street by street basis. Regarding the front yard language, um, which you went through in terms of averaging the setbacks. Um, this language seems like it encourages new properties to take cues from their neighbors and we think this will help new construction conform better to the look and feel of the neighborhood. Regarding the proposed side yard setbacks, one of the concerns we discussed was given how close some existing houses are to each other in Barian City. Because of existing non-conforming side yard setbacks, we're concerned that adding bulk to these existing houses, both backward and upward. Along the same side yard setback has the potential to block a neighbor's view, reduce light for neighbors and ultimately negatively impact a neighbor's property values. So we're hoping for, to get more input from residents for ideas on how to prevent this. Um, and one of the questions we had is if an existing house has a non-conforming side yard setback. Under the new zoning proposal, would they be able to continue that non-conforming side yard with a rear addition? In other words, would the addition not have to conform with the new side yard minimums either? Similarly, if an existing house had a non-conforming side yard setback under the new zoning proposal, would they be able to continue that non-conforming side yard? Upward with a second floor addition. Um, so in other words, can or should additions that go on the back of a house have a different side yard setback than the existing house? Particularly if the existing house violates the new side yard setbacks. Um. Another question, is there a way to ensure that the zoning board can review all additions that would be along non-conforming side yards? So that neighbors affected can have their say. Um, and the final question on side yards is, should we set a minimum distance between two houses? Including additions, um, and any additions that encroach on that minimum distance would need zoning board review. Um, regarding the rear setback, one of the concerns we discussed was that we noted that there was no discussion of a proposal regarding the rear setback. Um, so what is the current rear setback? Is there a proposed change? Um, another concern or goal we discussed was that we're interested in encouraging garages to be built in the rear of houses or properties. So do detached garages count in the rear setback? And what are the setbacks for a detached garage? Regarding the proposed floor area ratio sliding scale, um, FAR is probably one of the most important issues for the neighborhood. Um, it looks like the FAR sliding scale proposal, as well as the proposed formula. To keep the scale of homes compatible with the existing development pattern is reasonable in relation to the lot sizes in the neighborhood. The issue of FAR will be further discussed, particularly as to how it affects multiple lots. Um. The FAR proposal also suggested that a maximum dwelling size can be established, so we'll have to get input from residents on this issue. And hope that we can get more information on what people want. Proposed maximum improved coverage sliding scale, um. A concern on this was some of us, particularly at Barian, are concerned that the MIC, about the MIC being too high. At one thousand square feet plus twelve percent of the lot area, particularly when it comes to storm. Hood, um, several street, neighborhood. So as a question, we were hoping we'd be able to provide more information about what the MIC numbers would look like in practice. Considering the maximum dwelling size is established for each lot area. Uh, regarding the proposed building height, we discussed at our meeting the issue of the new proposed building height at twenty eight feet stray, so from the height of the. Um, and I think we're in agreement that that would be effective. Um. So then regarding the design standards, uh, for, we have discussed the basics of the design standards. Addition, because um, attendees felt they would limit extreme changes to the stock character of the neighborhood, which was desired. Um, we need to finalize the desires of the residents concerning the standards pertaining to um. Uh, some standards that we may brainstormed pertaining to garages. Uh, many houses were built with detached garages and homes with larger lots. They have a garage attached on the side setback from the front facade of the house. So a question is, should we limit the size of a garage? Uh, such as no more than two car or by square footage and will this be accomplished with the MIC proposals? Um, we're not sure what the appropriate size limit would be, but that's something where we would want more input. Um, and then pertaining to a question that was posed by a planning board member, um. We would also like more information pertaining to tear downs and new construction, uh, the neighborhood in general. For new houses built in the neighborhood, um, we might suggest that architectural treatment should be compatible with the architectural style of the neighborhood. But a big question we had was, how do we codify a reasonable definition of a tear down and a new build? So that tear down design guidelines and the requirement of a zoning board review can apply. Uh, a concern we had is that the neighborhood would want anything that rationally appears to be a tear down to be considered a tear down. For purposes of zoning requirements. Um, and the neighborhood would like to close zoning loopholes that would allow true tear downs. And new builds to be considered additions. We think the following circumstances. Should rationally count as a tear down and a full new build. For example, if the foundation of the original home remains, but no other walls or architectural elements remain. If an owner lets a property fall into irreversible disrepair and there is no option but to tear it down and build something new. Or if the style of the original house is significantly changed. So we had a question of if, whether there are any other good definitions for tear downs that you might suggest. Like the percentage of the original structure that is removed or changed, or the removal of a certain number of contiguous external walls. Um, and then our other question is if there are any other options to prevent tear downs. Um, regarding the non-residential recommendations, we agree that existing residential, non-residential properties should be grandfathered in for their current use. But there was support for the zones allowable uses to be only for single-family residential, except for the non-residential properties that are already existing. Um, some of the discussion was that we would like nursing homes, group homes, schools and daycare centers not to be allowable uses in the zone anymore. Um, we suspect support in favor of increasing the allowable FAR to enable the arts council to use the full firehouse. By expanding into areas of the building that already exist, since we have always been so supportive of the arts council in the building. And at a future date, we are willing to discuss signage regulations. The neighborhood would like to be notified when signage regulations, including murals, are being reviewed. Um, we had some other miscellaneous questions, um, with the movement around the country for houses and neighborhoods, um. To corporations and investment firms, is there any way to um, prevent some of those kinds of purchases? And does the township or the zone have any existing rules related to Airbnbs? Um, so let me emphasize again that we still have a need for more feedback from the residents on the very specific details of this new zoning. And we will definitely plan for another neighborhood meeting to get feedback from those that are interested in sharing their viewpoints and creating as much of a consensus as possible. This was where the question stood before this date. Thank you for giving me so much time.
I do.
So, so, so David, you'll get a list of the questions and points and concerns?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I was just talking about. Some of these I know the answers to, some of them are good questions I never considered, so I'll have to do a little research and digging, but uh, no, I really appreciate.
I, 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 can I ask one of the, regarding the setback, if the setback is, is not conforming and they do an extension. And the extension lines up with the original setback, is that allowed right now? Okay, thank you.
If you maintain that not conforming going back, it would be allowed. That can also be, you can obviously address that via zoning. Regulations for this community should, and we want to, uh, but that would be at least one answer. If you do extend it back, we'd be allowed to do that as a right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, John Church, eleven Princeton Place and a member of the zoning board. So I'm very interested in your project here tonight. We wait with great anticipation on the zoning board, what the final ordinances will, will be. We have had many, many applications in Barian City for FAR variances, as well as some other types. And so this is of great importance to us. We want to have our job made as, made easier if possible. Because right now it's quite difficult with all the things that are coming before us. So anyway, please uh, go to it and come up with uh. Some more comprehensive zoning regulations. It's badly needed here, as we all know. Uh, we don't know, as Curtis Hoperman mentioned earlier, how this all originated in the first place. Must goes back to the nineteen eighties probably. Or even earlier, uh, it's a strange thing, what we have now, it just doesn't comport with anything that's reasonable or what's presently there. It needs to be fixed and fixed correctly. So please go ahead and uh, do this study and uh, present specific ordinances. For proposals and we hope on the zoning board, I think that this will come through and then make our job easier. And uh, and we hope to satisfy the community and everyone associated with it. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Susan Conlon, ninety eight Harris Road, and um, I just wanted to touch on um. The topic about the neighborhood I'm getting together to put the time into. Uh, having our neighbors come together and talk about this, come up with questions. We appreciate the process. And the work that you guys have done so far. And just to tell you a little bit more about that, so. We um, we have an email list that we can get in touch with people in the neighborhood. We use that to um. Post meeting dates. It's not opinion-based, it's not a discussion group, it's just information. So we also. And this is a few people who are doing this, myself and some other people, just to facilitate this process. And part of the time goes into securing um, locations in town to have meetings, getting people out for the meetings. Um, we can only get in touch with people if we can add them to the mailing list and also people um. Tell their neighbors about things too. So if anyone is here tonight in the neighborhood who would like to be on that email list, who is not, please let us know. We'll add you to the list. We realize sometimes people, we've had some flyers that have gone out in the neighborhood and I think they're confusing. I think they might lead residents to believe that flyers are coming from the township and represent the views and opinions of the township. To our knowledge, that's not true. And um, also they're anonymous flyers, so we really don't know what they're about. So anyway, we really um, are in favor of everybody coming together. There's gonna be differences of opinion, we know that, but it's a process that. Um, we want to get through on this. And just to um. Um, touching on what Curtis mentioned, I don't know about other people here, but I get calls, I get a few every week. Um, phone calls, people, and there are companies, I suppose, cold callers asking if I want to sell my house. And um, this is happening with great frequency. Maybe it's just a sign I need to get rid of my landline, I don't know, but. Um, so anyway, um, you know, we can see that there's, there's, there's a change and we understand that the neighborhood is going, going to change. But I think in this process, talking about just trying to define what are some community objectives going through. Well, so, and I just thank you to um, my neighbors who have been putting a lot of effort into this. You know, it's um, we're gonna go, get somewhere, so thank you. Okay, and, and we did get the um, emails from it. I'll make sure that our contact information is, is current, which, you know, we'll make sure we get back in touch. So we're making an effort just to be facilitators of the exchange of information. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Madison, forty Montgomery Street. Um, there's a couple of things that I had a question about, um, setback, the way that you have using it. Is, uh, if this keeps happening sequentially, right, I could foresee people's housing. Going all the way back, because you're going ahead and saying, right, the new build is the average of the two. So if you have. Is there some way of stopping that?
Yes, I, I see exactly what you're saying. And so the idea is to allow for some flexibility, but what we don't want to happen is. Say, allow for a front yard setback thirty feet, but your neighbors are for some reason setback way further, so you have to inch further away back. We would put in language saying there that it would be the, the smaller of the two, either that whatever the required front yard setback is, or the average of the two. And we can also establish a minimum as well, so that way.
Well, just let me, I, I understand what you're saying. I guess what I'm looking at is sort of like, you know, thirty years down, you have multiple. Um, rebuilds, sequential rebuilds. Scenario, the way you're proposing it right now is that. Even if you keep taking the minimum of that, the two adjacent, if you're tearing everything down and rebuilding. That's front setback keeps going further, further back.
Further, when you say further back, you mean away from the street or close?
Away from the street.
Away from the street.
Maybe have a maximum uh, way from the street.
That would be one solution to that, yeah.
I just, it's like one of these things that I'm thinking about, right?
Yeah.
Fifty years from now.
Incremental change, yes.
Completely, that's what the initial impact was of the ordinance.
Yes, uh, so what we can do is that we'll, we'll take a look at that. I see what you're saying. Because we want a lot of flexibility, but we also don't want to create a scenario where we just keep pushing people back away from the street. Um, especially because that street front is just so attractive and barren. We can take a look at that, sure.
Um, the other thing I had a question about, well, it's, it's more really just a comment in that it, the. Proposed FARs for the larger lots seem punitive in terms of you having a larger lots. the proposed FARs for the larger lots seem punitive in terms of you having a larger lots. And I don't, maybe you can't get around that, but it just seems. I guess what I'm trying to say, it seems there's an inequity there. And that's coming, we are on one of those.
Larger lots.
Not that that really makes a difference in anything, but you know, that that proposal is disproportionately affecting what we could potentially do versus anybody else.
Yes.
Not anybody else, but the smaller lots. And I mean, I understand that there has to be some compromise, but I don't know, it's something to think about. And then the last thing that I would like to bring up is the residential design standards. I read that, and I have to say that my hackles raised, you know, exponential. We have been in the neighborhood for more than 20 years. And when we moved there, one of the things we really liked was that there was no HOA and that it was a real mix of different architectures. And the whole idea of there being a, what really in my mind is a subjective determination of what fits with the existing design. Because I mean, out there, there's a huge number of sort of mixed architectures that, I mean, are incredible. I think they're really, really nice. And, you know, my neighbor could go ahead and say, well, I don't like that particular flavor of mixed architecture. And it doesn't, you know, someone could say, well, it doesn't conform to the existing design, right? And I just think that's that seems extreme in dealing with the neighborhood, because the neighborhood itself is not like every single house is of the same architecture. It's not a trapped home development. So there is a real consistent, you know, design standard that is established. I mean, it's a real hodgepodge of architecture, sizes of houses, and yeah, I just think that that's a real problem.
Driving up and down the different streets of Barien City, you do see a lot of architectural styles. I definitely agree with that. Every street is a little bit different. Every house sometimes are a little bit different too. So that balancing act that we're going to try to achieve with this ordinance is coming up with some certain design standards, but at the same time, recognizing the architectural flavors there and allowing for that flexibility in design. And that's going to be a challenge. I agree. That's going to be something that we're going to have to vet through an ordinance and work with the community on. But it should not be like a one size fits all solution that you might see in, you know, a newer neighborhood where all the houses are the same. And I don't think, I wouldn't want that. I don't think anybody else would want that. I can't speak for everybody else, but it's going to be the balancing, sure, I agree.
And there's just one other thing I just remembered. So you have the sliding scale for a lot of these things. And one of the things that stood out to me, which was kind of a little bit inconsistent, was there's no sliding scale for height, that sort of changing the height from the 35 to the 28. And I mean, is, if you're really pushing this sliding scale that's dependent on lot size, then should it not be consistent in all of those aspects? I mean, within.
Well, we only, we only did the sliding scale for percentages, right? So that would be your floor area ratio and your roof coverage. So those are the only sliding scales that we had, because they were already tied to percentage calculation as opposed to everything else, which is typically, not always, but typically a foot setback requirement. That being said, linking a building height to a lot size is something that we can definitely take under consideration, because.
Other thing, the other piece of data that was missing is that I don't, maybe I apologize if I missed it, but there's no data indicating what is the spread of the house sizes currently in Barien City.
In terms of floor areas, we do have that?
Well, not, not floor areas, but.
Building height, that's, yeah, so that.
Right, and so I think it's difficult to properly assess what, knowing what the existing bell curve of that is.
Yes, that is data that's a lot more difficult to get, fortunately. We can come up with rough estimates. But unfortunately, it used to be tax data, and now we have to rely on other sources sometimes. But tax data would often report what the floor area is, so we can have that reliably. We can do more reliable two dimensional measurements. Three dimensional with height gets a little bit more difficult, but it is something that we can look at. There are certain tools that we can utilize to see what those heights are and come up with some rough estimates about what the existing height of the neighborhood are, how that would be impacted by a height calculation change, and whether or not it makes sense to look at building heights based on lot sizes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Condo, I live at 6 Barien. I have a couple, a few like disparate comments, I guess, you know, it's kind of all over the place. But first, I would like to comment on the, I guess it would be the shoe, the shoe repair house, I guess, you know, that's on the corner of Alexander and Barien. I really believe that that should be changed to a residential zone and not a commercial, because the shoe repair portion of that is small, it's a room, and it's a three story house. The rest of it is a three story house. And my concern is, it is, you know, very close to residential and everything else is residential. And even, even Brothers is fairly residential, because they have apartments on top, you know. And my concern would be that they would tear it down and build something very commercial there. And so my, my opinion would be to make that particular house commercial, you know, keep, keep Brothers and keep the Arts Council, or sorry, residential, keep the Arts Council and Brothers commercial, but make the one on the corner just residential. Because I think we're allowed to have home, home, you know, businesses out of our, you know, homes, like our home offices and things like that. And then I also wanted to kind of alleviate like some concerns. I know that a while ago, when we moved in 2008, one of our former neighbors, Judith Knurk, is that what her last name is? Yeah, they live in, she used to live in Izzy and Dave's house. Knurk. Judith Knurk did a whole study about the houses in Barien. And she also did a study about how to appropriately expand them, keeping with their flavor. And so I'm not sure if Judith still has it. She has moved out. Yeah, yeah. And so that would be very helpful, like as, as a starting point to begin with the guidelines of how you could codify different types of additions. I also strongly, strongly believe you need to codify on what constitutes reconstruction, remodeling, and teardown. Because as you know, we have a great example on our street of it, basically a teardown, when it is just a basement and some studs. And we're going to also have a kind of a polar opposite. We're going to have a very lovely house with an addition on it, on the opposite side of it, that conforms to our neighborhood beautifully. They said they were going, and I'm assuming you all are still, they're going to use the materials. Your addition plans are lovely. And so it's like a very, very, I don't know, a very, very like black and white picture of what could be foreign additions and what, you know, maybe is not as cool. And then I guess finally, I really want to state that the, the proposed roof heights is very important, because as currently it's a new house, they made it to the maximum of 35. And I would like to share my pictures, but I didn't print them off of what it currently looks like in my house now, as it is about 15 to 20 feet. It's probably about 15 feet away. We no longer have light on our bottom floor when we look out the window. And so if it was capped down seven more feet, we would actually have like light. We used to have light, because the bungalow there was a story and a half with a sunroom on the back. And now it's of like a 2,000 square foot rectangle. And it's a concern for future people. I mean, what's done is done, and you know, their house is their house. But for future constructions, it's a concern, because it's southern facing, like, I think they ruined my property value. So that's my concern. And do you mind if I just show you real quickly? That needs to be addressed. And, you know, we are neighbors, and it's important to be neighborly to people. And you need to think like, not just for yourselves, but also for the people living around you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Bonnie Chan Jensen, and I am the 8 Barien Jensen, J E N S E N. 8 Barien. So I thank you for the presentation. It was actually very insightful. It's my first time kind of going through this presentation, so thank you so much. So I do want to express some concerns about some of the proposals, especially that it doesn't consider the adequate needs and considerations of a growing family, especially for a family that just moved here who wants to grow and thrive in the community. So I do support the small lots being able to grow. But I, when I saw the restrictions and max lock size because of, you know, the house that we're currently in, I felt that it was very restrictive on people who are, who abide by the current FAR, but is, just because of their lot size, cannot do a permit in the future. For example, if I wanted to do a renovation in my interior bathroom later on, I'll have to go through a variance, and it would be adding additional cost and complexity to my family. And so, for instance, I'm the house that's being built, because we just moved here. I'm going to give birth in January, and we're planning on, you know, we're planning on building our family here. And in my culture, it's very common for us to have multi-generational families, where, you know, worth considering baby care and elderly care. And so for us, like, we want to be able to just grow and be able to like be in this house comfortably. And so I know that renovations are very disruptive, and I'm very sorry for all the construction, because I know it's very inconvenient, but I'm really hoping that this house will be done soon before the baby comes to, so we can just move in and get settled. But I really do want you to reconsider the maximum lot size, just because to think about the diverse needs of the community and those who rely on a larger lot size to grow their families.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Susan Abbey, 5 Scott Avenue. Sam, the shoe repair place, does that have a variance? Or is that just, spend there so long, it's just grandfathered? Oh, okay. So that is zoned residential, as is actually the Arts Council's firehouse and all the other lots. Yeah, I think if that house is ever sold and somebody wants to tear it down, I would imagine they'd probably have to come to the zoning board if they wanted to put a small store or a business of some kind. I would think it would automatically be restricted just by the fact that there's no place to park. So, you know, if it's going to be some small, very small thing like the shoe repair place that doesn't get a lot of heavy traffic, that would be something that the zoning board is going to take into consideration. But they would have to come to the zoning boards, which seems appropriate to me if it is a residential lot. The, the parking about, the thing about overflow parking for the Arts Council, my understanding is that we already have an agreement for that? Is that correct? When they were doing the Arts Council, I thought that was one of the factors, was that there was an agreement for overflow at the train station, particularly for weekends, because, you know, nobody's parking way at that Alexander end of the township parking lot on the weekends. That's typically empty, so. Okay. Yeah. So I mean, that, that sounds reasonable. I thought it already existed. I think some people thought it already existed. Yeah, so that wouldn't really be a concern. It sounds appropriate, especially for weekends. And they park down Scott Avenue on the weekends anyway, when they have something big, so.
I believe weekends are free at the train station on Wallace Road over.
It is, they are. A lot of people don't know that. Most people don't know that, that you can park for free on the weekends, yeah.
West Windsor residents and consultants of the city?
West Windsor resident?
I don't think they check.
Are we going to take it?
The issue with the ADUs, I know that in Barien City, and we'll have to, I think, talk about garages more specifically, so many of the houses had garages in the back, of course, because the lots are so narrow. And having a garage in the back and determining what those setbacks are, if they do come up with, yes, you have to allow ADUs above the garage is the perfect place for it, rather than building a house back there, at least like with the one that came to the zoning board. The zoning board said, make the bottom part a garage door with your space above, because they were not able to add on to the house for various reasons I won't go into. I think one thing that should be addressed also is subdivision, the issue of subdivisions, because we do have houses that have double lots, and sometimes the house was centered on the two lots, but sometimes it was just built on the one, and the other lot is basically free. So, you know, I think that's something to consider is, are we going to allow subdivisions? I assume that goes to the planning board for a subdivision, and is there a minimum size that that lot needs to be? I think that's something to, to come up with as well, so that some of those people who do have multiple lots, they may not want to sell it and have somebody put up a, you know, 10,000 square foot house, but they can subdivide it and make some money by selling that extra lot. I think that, that would be something. It truly is going to be, there's not going to be a one size fits all for this neighborhood. I think that's, that's just a given. And right now, pretty much everything has to go to the zoning board. So if even only half the stuff has to go to the zoning board, that, that's a, that's a big benefit. FAR, obviously, that's something we need to talk about more and get some more feedback on from the residents, since we haven't had the real detailed discussion on that. And I know on the committee, I mean, we went through, what about this and what about that? What would that mean for this one and that one? And it wasn't conclusive, because we do want to get feedback from, from people with multiple lots. There is no issue on color in our neighborhood. We do have a pink house and a purple house, so you know, I don't think anybody has ever said anything about colors. If you're going to build on an oversized lot, is that something you would need a variance for? I mean, there's that question. I don't know the answer to, something to think about. I think probably the most important thing that Izzy brought up was the whole issue of teardowns, rental, you know, where is it? You know, some towns, it's as long as you leave the foundation, it's, it's not even a teardown, which is nonsense. If you leave the first floor, is if you take out one wall, is that it? If you completely change the whole facade, is that, you know, where do you draw the line on what is such a major renovation that there need to be some kind of rules about it? And maybe the rule is just, it's strict and you go to the zoning board, you know? And, I mean, the zoning board is pretty lenient, assuming that people. bring something that, that's gonna fit into the neighborhood. You know, we've, we've okayed things with, you know, some pretty good size additions to it, including the, the house uh, that we just had this past month on Barien, the little yellow house.
House in Barien City.
Seven hundred something square foot house. They doubled the size to fourteen hundred. So now it's, you know, it's gonna be huge. You know, and we did allow it to be closer to the house next door with some restrictions about some screening and that kind of thing. So um, I think that's it. You know, we have um, a lot to hear from the, the residents. Um, like I said, everybody, uh, we've encouraged people to get on the mailing list. They've all been notified, the Facebook page. Um, people showed up. We've had meetings at the library and we've gotten feedback already. I really want to thank David. I think you did such an amazing job with this. When you look at the plan, when you look at the plan, it reflects everything that all of the residents said back in April. And I think, you know, I think you did amazing job. Again, much, you know, much more to come and much more feedback for us to get, but thank you, thank you, David.
No, thank you.
Doctor, you have talked about defining what teardown supplies. I did ask our inspector, Jason, and he said that it's all defined by Uniform Construction Code. What is demolition? What's new construction? What is addition? The Uniform Construction Code does define what you can and can do.
Hi, everybody. Sam Jensen at Abarian. So before I jump into it, I would just like to apologize for the residents on Barien Ave for the impact of the construction. Um, very, very sorry. I understand the disruption and chaos that can cause for a street, especially the size of Barien. So really do uh, apologize. And I would also like to emphasize that my wife and I are very excited to move in and join the community.
You can take the mic in your hand.
Maybe I'll pop it up a little. So as, as I thought about the proposed zoning and planning regulations that were reviewed today, uh, ahead of today's meeting, I wanted to get a better understanding from a historical perspective for Barien City. And as I read throughout the various sources, I came across a document uh, that was actually presented uh, from with Burgess Associates as a header at uh, August twenty twenty-three West Windsor Zoning Board Meeting. And I believe it speaks to the customs and traditions of the original families living in this neighborhood. I just wanted to read a, a quick excerpt. So throughout the nineteen twenties and thirties, this neighborhood was subdivided into multiple lots, some of which were as small as five thousand square feet. As was the custom during those times, families would purchase multiple lots depending on both their budget as well as their anticipated household size. As a result, the lot sizes throughout the neighborhood vary greatly in both size and shape. And I have a couple of copies here if anybody is interested in. The core tenants of those who founded this beautiful city were always focused on allowing for a diverse mix of families with larger and smaller families coexisting in the neighborhood. This is why I am deeply concerned about the proposed updates to the zoning regulations and believe that it is the opposite of what the intended purpose of the original founders of Barien City were uh, aiming for in terms of allowing families to build for not only their current family, but growing families, whether that's a newlywed couple expecting a kid, multi-generational living. So maybe somebody wants to have a family, an in-law live with them in order to take care of an elder parent. And I think that that is really the heart of when I was reading through some of the twenty twenty land use plan and some of that. So that, to me, stuck, struck out very much. So fast forward to October twenty twenty-three, the date of our home inspection while we were under the purchase process for our home at Abarian. My wife and I were deeply upset by the results from our inspector, which included numerous issues throughout the house, not limited to mold throughout the house, also significant remediation for that mold and leaks on, leaks throughout the house in more locations than I could count on my two hands. In the words of our inspector, you would be a fool to move forward with the purchase of this house. However, my wife and I saw the potential in not only the house, but also the community and decided to make a significant investment in both the house and the community for our future family. We are so grateful for the community and the support that we have received as we progress along with the build process. And to my surprise, even those residents who have lived in Barien City for decades have been supportive of our plans to build a home that can accommodate our growing family with our baby boy expected this upcoming January. It was then that I realized that the community of Barien City is much larger than the homes which were built many decades ago, but rather the people that live in the community. I was also astonished to hear how few people were aware of this proposed zoning regulation being discussed today, and it made me realize that this zoning update may potentially be driven by very, by few within the community and majority of people being unaware or misunderstanding of the implications. And I am happy to see some people I spoke with come today and I hope you support, uh, you know, voice your opinion as well. Therefore, I implored the board today to consider the following. First off, I strongly support zoning regulations that would make it easier and more accessible for homes with smaller lot sizes to build bigger residences to acclimate their growing families. I see, take my neighbor, for instance, with the most recent variance that they had to do. To me, it is added unnecessary costs onto their family to go through the variance process and have to, you know, get all of that together when they just purchased a home and are, you know, hoping, I believe it was to have your, uh, one of your parents live with you. So uh, it just adds unnecessary expenses to have to go to a variance. So I do support that. One, one potential uh, part where I want to voice my opinion, however, is it the negative impact that this would have on those with larger lot sizes that likely uh, you know, and these families may have purposely invested in those properties with larger lot sizes in their home purchase, knowing that it could accommodate a future growing family or a multi-generational family. I would also strongly request that the board remove any type of maximum lot restrictions and other updates to the zoning that would require those with larger lots to get a variance. As I was listening to the discussion at the beginning, the goal of this stated planning was to remove barriers to those non-conforming lots, so that everybody wouldn't have to go to a variance. However, it seems that by removing some barriers, we're also placing barriers on those larger lot sizes that would essentially be doing what the stated goal was to remove the uh, need for variances and placing undue financial burdens onto those with larger lot sizes. I also would strongly oppose any other type of mock maximum lot with conformance or anything else that would require those homes already inconformance in order to have to go and get a permit or a variance. I also want to express my concern for the residential design standards. As I was reviewing the homes within Barien City and the years that they were built, I noticed that it wasn't all only homes built in the nineteen twenties and thirties. And as stated today, many of the homes actually do stick out from each other. There's a lot of different styles in each of the decades that homes are built over the past hundred plus years. However, for whatever reason, we're now deciding that this most recent decade of maybe more modern building doesn't fit. So that would just be a little bit counterintuitive to the flavor of the neighborhood to have homes from decades from throughout the twenties, the thirties, the forties, fifties, sixties, seventies. But then all of a sudden, we're not saying that homes in the twenty twenties can build and be included in that community. So I know I've been long-winded, so I uh, appreciate the uh, time today, but in, in summary, express my concern around the proposed zoning recommendations. And you know, in discussing with people, many people have said to me, you know, Sam, you understand, your property is fine. You already got your approval. Why do you care so much? And for me, while obviously I'm very happy that we're able to have our plans approved, I'm really here today on behalf of potentially that future newlywed couple who's considering moving into the township of Barien City and wants to make an investment for not only their family, but join that community. And you know, they, they might need to make significant renovations to a home that in somebody's words is irreversible disrepair. And in order to make some of those updates and spend that cost, you may have to actually make significant renovations that may not be exactly what were uh, originally there at, you know, the, the outset of a purchase. With that, I do really thank you and everybody for the time today and apologies for my long-winded speech.
Thank you.
Hi, Kevin Ranallo. Ranallo, R A N A L L O, one oh six Harris Road. I want to say thank you to, to everybody for doing this and thank you, Izzy, for coming up earlier and, and saying everything and speaking about everything that we covered. I just have a couple of questions and I'm gonna kind of go off script a little bit um, from what we were at before. So I guess one of the questions is, is it possible to bring the map up of Barien City on the, the larger screen?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Uh, how is this one work?
Uh, can you go to the one with the color? It might be a little bit easier to see the, to find. Okay, that's perfect. Okay, so if you're looking at, one of my questions is, if you're looking at Harris, obviously Harris, Springwood, parts of Lily are not technically in Barien City, according to the map. Right? So.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So like, right. So I think the last block on the inside would be one fourteen, probably one fourteen. Right, exactly. Yes. The uh, so that would be the house that was just torn down and put up. Uh, the house next to that would actually be my aunt's, the house that my aunt grew up in, her father actually built that house. Uh, and then further on down it goes, and then you have Springwood, and then it goes to Lily, and then parts of Lily are in Barien. How would this all affect the areas outside of that? So I live on Harris. If you're gonna re, I wouldn't say restrict, but change the zoning on Harris for, say, a portion of the road, the rest of that road, there's a lot of double lots down toward the high school, right? So then, is it, is this going to affect that portion as well? And if not, can we kind of incorporate that into it, even though it's not technically within the Barien City map? It's there, it's on the same street. So you have essentially zoning, two different zonings for one street. To me, that wouldn't make sense. And then same thing with Lily and then Springwood also, because it, some of those houses back up to houses on Harris uh, and obviously on Clarksville and uh, five seventy-one as well. Um, so it's a concern, that's a concern.
And so to answer the first question, um, we go back to the, uh, this map. So as you mentioned, the, the properties highlighted in colors and also with that yellow outline, that's what we're talking about. So you know, if, if zoning regulations do what's will be implemented, those properties to the south of that going to Springwood and to the high school would remain in that R twenty district there. So nothing would change for those properties. Uh, whether or not we want to incorporate those in this, you know, I had worked with the planning board back in twenty twenty with Sam afterward, just to make sure that we were kind of encapsulating what we thought was the historical development pattern of Barien City. So that's kind of a larger question. Um, obviously, if you link it up to a master plan, you can make zoning recommendations, but that's where that boundary line was. We tried to delineate that to the general historic boundary of Barien City.
Right.
It'd be up to really the board if they wanted to expand that, the scope of that study.
I mean, for me, obviously, as a resident, I would recommend it because as it is, that one house that went up, it, I have it somewhere. It was just the size of it compared to the houses next to it. And now if this is not included, you're gonna have a similar situation where one side of the street is gonna be completely different than the other side of the street and then even more different than the further side, because as you make that bend going towards the high school, the houses are much, it's a different style house. So you're gonna, it's gonna be kind of like all over the place. Uh, so I would definitely consider looking into that and seeing if that could be something that could be implemented, just so it's, you're not driving down a street and all of a sudden you're like, whoa, McMansions, where am I? Am I in like, you know, a big development somewhere? Um, let's see. And I know uh, the shoe repair, repair place was covered and Brothers was kind of covered. But what would happen if, say, Brothers, the, the owners of the property decided to sell, somebody came in, they're like, we no longer want this, we're gonna, you know, maybe get rid of the building, take the building down, put something new up.
What would happen?
Uh, and then like the shoe repairs well. So if that's mixed use now, is, is, am I mistaken? Is that what you had said that that was?
Yeah, 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 yes and no. So we would want to, one of the recommendations or the ideas would be to, in that mixed years, like you said, to that subsequent age, uh, to allow for pre-existing non-conforming uses, which existed at the time the adoption of the orders. But if one of those pre-existing buildings was to be removed, then they're basically losing that status.
Okay.
They wanted to build a new commercial building, they have to go over D one G stacks, but the zoning board, it wouldn't be permitted. The idea would be to um, allow for those pre-existing structures to continue and allow for them to make some sort of addition or some sort of improvement to it without necessarily needing zoning board approval. What those parameters would look like, obviously, we still have to work on, but if they were to be removed and somebody wanted to say build a quick check there or something like that, that would require D one G stacks. It would not be permitted by zoning.
Okay, that's good. Uh, let's see. Sorry. Uh, and to speak to new families coming into the neighborhood, you know, married couples wanting to grow their family and expand the houses and so forth and so forth. Uh, I can kind of speak directly to that. So my mother grew up at one ten Harris. The house was purchased in the, probably the mid forties. Uh, she ended up marrying my father. They moved next door to one oh six. They had a family, uh, three of us were there, three, my two brothers and myself, my father and my mother. We ended up, we did end up putting an addition. They did convert the second floor of the attic to living space. And then we added a twenty by twenty addition on the back, which was a reasonable addition. The house is not enormous. It, in my opinion, it fits the lot the way, you know, it should. Uh, we did speak to the neighbors because back then we would go knock on a neighbor's door and say, hey, Mr. Blaney, do you mind if we do this? Hey, you know, Mrs. Hall, is it cool if we do this? Let's discuss it and see what's going on. Uh, and that's kind of what we did. It was the neighbors were family. Um, you know, and then when we were going to sell my grandmother's house, I shouldn't have been surprised, but I was, that almost everybody that came in to try and purchase the house was giving us a lowball offer, because they said the lot's not large enough for us to build the house that we want to put on it. And my response was, well, then this is not the lot for you. And the real estate agent was kind of surprised. They're like, do you want to know what an offer is? And I'm like, no, this isn't their house. It's a smaller lot. It's essentially a starter home now, even though my grandparents and my mother and uncle grew up in that small house. And then along came this family who unfortunately isn't here tonight. I think they had a back of school night. And they said, we love the house. We'd like to make an offer. And I said, I told the real estate agent, let's hear it, because they loved the house, they wanted to move in and they would expand the house with their family. And from my understanding now, they're currently wanting to put a reasonable addition on the house. They're not looking to knock it down. They fell in love with the charm, just like a few neighbors down the road from me. They moved here probably three, four years ago. They said the same thing. We'd love the charm of the neighborhood. It wasn't about, it was affordable, we could knock it down, put something larger up on a lot. It's the charm of the neighborhood. And I think that if we start doing more houses like one fourteen Harris, uh, I can't speak to theirs because I haven't seen it complete. I've only seen it framed, but it's definitely very much different than the neighboring houses. Um, I think one fourteen is a cautionary tale that we have to look at. Uh, now, that was also a flipper. So the person that built that does not live there. I met the family that lives there. They're lovely. They're amazing people. Um, and part of me kind of feels a little bit bad, because there are like bad feelings about the house, but because they're such nice people, whatever, they're, they're great neighbors, right? As far as I can tell right now. But I think that expanding a house for a growing family is possible without having to have it huge. But we'll discuss all that, you know, in the, in the Barien City meeting with, with hopefully additional people this time. Yeah, I think that's it. Oh, and to speak to the, the, I guess, the, the article or the, the, the letter about the lots being purchased. Um, just a funny side note, I remember growing up, speaking to my grandmother, uh, on Harris, and the story was when they moved in, Harris was a dead end dirt road. A lot of those houses going towards the end didn't exist. And she always said, those lots were available for like a hundred or $200 at the time when they were there. And to this day, I'm like, why didn't you buy them? Right? So
Even I could afford that.
Right? And it was always money was tight. I'm like beg, borrow and steal at this point, right? Like, but like that being said, a lot of those are, you know, double lots. I believe one is a triple lot and that triple lot house is a prime example of great house, big lot, unassuming. You would never even know what that house was. Um, but the double lots and everything that are there now, they didn't build huge on it. They didn't need to. Um, so I think that's just something that I think we're all going to have to look at and hopefully figure out. Uh, sorry, I rambled and thank you once again. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank, uh, Dave Kimmel, uh, Levin Scott. Levin Scott Avenue. So thank you again to the staff for all the work that you put into this and, uh, the planning board for working on it. Just want to echo some of what other people have said and add a few more notes. Echoing, uh, what Kevin just said, I, I think there is the, the character that the neighborhood is, is important and it is a neighborhood of generally smaller houses than any other part of West Windsor and generally smaller lots. So I am in favor of and others with, of the proposed smaller floor area ratio and sliding scale and it's, the, the size of the house, size of houses are important also, not just for the neighborhood, but for um, more affordability and sustainability. And you can also still have a larger house. Uh, it's still possible. Um, want to set the goal as the neighborhood character, but um, you can always get a variance if, if, if something doesn't fit for what, what the community is set for. Um, but what Kevin said too, I can relate to that. It's like, it's, it's possible to have a growing family and live in a small house. And my wife and I also live in a relatively small house and it's, uh, you know, a new newlywed couple in the neighborhood and that's, that's possible also. But in terms of some other things, residential design standards, I think it's also important for incorporating that into the zoning ordinance. And I know it's a challenge to, and appreciate your work on that. Um, trying to customize it for whatever the neighborhood wants. There's a lot of different architectural styles. But you'll know when something is not of the right, of, of the, when something's out of character, you'll, you'll know it like some of, like what Curtis was sharing. So how do you sort of codify that in terms of, um, I agree with the comments about teardowns and trying to make more sense of that. The mayor mentioned that the UCC has a definition. So my request would be, you know, we're writing ordinances and zoning rules. So if the UCC definition doesn't work, then let's come up with our new definition that works for West Windsor and for this, for Baryon City. Also for growing families, the accessory dwelling units is a important thing also for older generations. So yeah, maybe the state will one day will pass a, enact a law that allows it in all zones all throughout the state, but who knows when that'll happen. So why don't we be creative and innovative and really think about it and take a look at it? Also, I think like part of, uh, one characteristic of the neighborhood that is attractive is that there is a small amount of commercial and that there's places for people to walk to or destinations. You can meet people on your way out there. Uh, the more people that are out, the slower the traffic will be. So there's more walkability. Um, so I think the, the main thing is to, if there's any commercial, that it should just be appropriate for the neighborhood. Like I think people, I appreciate that there's a restaurant, there's an artist council, um, things of that nature. I don't know how to, how you would define that or limit that, but you know, any other place in West Windsor, it's a bunch of houses and here we have additional things that we can walk to. So again, I thank you for the work and I look forward to seeing the next pieces that come out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chen Ping Wang, Nice Scott Avenue. Thank you for the tremendous amount of work. Uh, I mean, it's really an education for me. Um, just a couple observation. I think Baryon City, you said it right. It's a charming neighborhood and I think everybody here would like to maintain the, the charm and part of the charm is, is variance. It's not all built in certain styles and so forth. This is this big variation every time I walk with guests down the road, you know, upon that, oh, look at this one, look at that one. And when you talk to the elders, who a lot of them are no longer around, they can tell you a lot of story about why this house is here. Where is that come from and so forth? So, um, my point is that the characteristic that when we're trying to codify, it's really very challenging. And on the other hand, I do respect that it should be some reasonable, uh, guideline. So when you consider the two, personally, I cherish the fact that this country allow for so much variance and, and I would like you to consider to be as non-prescript. If it's all possible. So don't be too specific in saying this kind of building material is good, this kind of building material is not good, this style and so forth. But I don't know how to advise you, but just be reasonable, not go too extreme one way or the other. The other things that I would like to just mention, I hear about this building height. Uh, I was kind of surprised that it got reduced probably for a particular reason, but I think the building height become more critical problem when it's very next to a very narrow to the next neighbor. So if you eight feet away from your neighbor, it, it is a very uh, impulsive, uh, height. But if it's further away, so that the distance to the next whatever building or neighbor, I think should be considered, not the absolute, just one size fit or a set of one. The other thing I wasn't quite clear reading this, and I hear a little explanation is the maximum lot size. And I'm not quite sure what this actually mean for residents who right now is living in a lot size that is greater than the number that was there. And what, what does that mean? If we want to renovate a kitchen, uh, does that consider to be required a variance or not? So I like a little bit more explanation of what this maximum lot size does. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Um, let's just get to that page, what we talked about. So what that lot size would do is that a couple of things. One, if somebody wanted to uh, acquire a different property or do a lot line adjustment with a neighbor, a lot line adjustment is when you, when your neighbor change what your lot lines are. Uh, if you want to acquire additional property and you are over that threshold, yes, you need a variance. If you wanted to renovate the interior of your house, in, in my vision of this, uh, no, you would not need a variance for that. So you would be pre-existing condition. If you wanted to renovate your house, you wanted to renovate, uh, uh, you know, bedrooms, garage, you know, install a new kitchen, that would not trigger a type of variance. Uh, what we'd be looking for is really new construction. That's at least the, the thought process I would have in tracking regulation. So if somebody wanted to knock down the house and build a new one, then I think that would probably trigger variance in that scenario. If it was an oversized lot.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, uh, Christopher Dilks, forty Baryon. Um, and I want to start by saying that we bought in Baryon City because we love the houses. We love, actually we love the, the variability. We love, um, generally the whole neighborhood. Um, as we've been living here, we've come to love our neighbors as well. They're pretty awesome people. Um, I, I do have a couple of concerns, um, mostly being that when we bought the house, we had plans for, to expand. Um, we do plan on going slightly larger. It is modest, uh, with the proposed changes. It now, now what we want to be doing falls larger than what is allowed because we're right around, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know that it's worth bringing up, um, but uh, we're right around the center where it starts going from allowing more to allowing less. Um, and now that small addition kind of becomes problematic, uh, to meet what we're looking to do. And, uh, the, the only other thing I wanted to mention was we had looked at places with HOAs. Um, and we explicitly decided not to buy in a place that had an HOA because we, we didn't like the limitations. Uh, it would apply, that would apply to the residents. Um, and I, I'm a little worried that as we're adding more and more, um, more limitations to what's being proposed, it's feeling closer to an HOA. It's not, but that's the general feeling. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please step up. We have, we have somebody. Okay, no problem. Everybody gets a chance to speak.
Uh, John Coran, K O R A N, five Scott Avenue. I want to thank you for all the work you did, um, took into consideration all of everything that the residents from the previous meeting came up with, but it was well done. I think one of the things to look at for the neighborhood, uh, is maybe pan back and look at the big picture of the whole township and you have a, a variety, diversity of all kinds of houses in the neighborhood. But one of the things that Baryon City has is compared to all of what's out there, it's a uniqueness. So that when you look at the design standards, that seem to be subjective. Um, there's a, a uniqueness. Um, or that there's a diversity within that uniqueness. So I don't know if I'm getting too deep into this whole thing, but the whole idea that you might have some, just this smattering of design standards throughout the whole township, it does kind of narrow down when you get into this neighborhood. So that you really see a few designs that seem to pop out, whether it's a Dutch colonial, um, just a regular bungalow, but there are traditionally height standards throughout the United States for these different types of houses that we've seen specifically in this neighborhood. So that when you look at the whole neighborhood as a whole, compared to what we have, and people could be happy in the larger houses if they want more square footage. The uniqueness of being in this particular proximity of all this uh, train station, like the different, um, commercial needs that people have, that kind of draws you into this area. And it wants to be, uh, condensed. Trying to keep from getting too condensed, like we have that development on the other side of the tracks now. That kind of gives you a, a feeling of you almost have to preserve, make a stand almost that this is what we have. We're proud of it and we want to maintain those particular standards. So I, I just, I don't know if I get too far into it, but, um, anyway, that's my thoughts on it. And, uh, thanks again for all the work you did.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in, uh, planning board?
I actually have a question for everybody. Just show of hands, who has a basement here? Has a basement?
Wow, look at that.
Thank you.
Also, you should ask who has a wet.
Who has a wet?
It's awesome that people know that the basement is not considered in the F A R.
That was
Yeah, you made up a whole other floor in your basement that you finished and that's not counted in your F A R.
That was one of the things.
Okay, anybody from the board? I'll, uh, I'll entertain them. Go ahead, Mayor. Okay, again.
So again, thanks everyone for coming. Gentlemen who selected all the input, they will, yeah, they will go back and, uh, process the input. If you have neighborhood meetings and gather more input, just email it to Sam and he will incorporate in there. And, uh, whenever they are ready with the next step, uh, we will come back again. I mean, there's, there's no strict timeline or, uh, any desired outcome, whatever the community agrees to, that, that's what we want to do. Uh, regarding timing, I mean, I know some of you in last meeting said you are in hurry to do that. Just want to warn you, uh, the affordable housing numbers are coming in two months. I always keep talking about that and depending on what happens, the gentleman will get very busy. Uh, and, uh, that is required by laws. They have strict timelines for all. So just want to put that on the table, but we will keep processing all the input you keep giving us. So just keep emailing Sam whenever you have meetings and gather something more.
Again, thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Um, I know there's a lot of different opinions, a lot of thoughts, but everybody was very respectful and you'd be surprised about the number of meetings that we can show up to where it's not so calm. So really I appreciate everybody's input.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Second.
Second by the mayor. While in favor, say aye. Okay. I'm not available. Okay, uh, meeting adjourned.
No, that would be the second Wednesday. Third Wednesday, they can see third Wednesday, we meet every other Wednesday.
First and third. It's first and third. Saying every other, but it's on the first.